Thank you for this wonderful community that we live in. Please guide and direct us as we make decisions tonight for the city. Please bless this town and bless our community and our country. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Third item on the agenda is the citizens' comments.
Mayor, there are no citizens' comments tonight.
Thank you. Fourth item would be awards and recognition. Do we have anything tonight? Go ahead.
If I may, just quickly, this was two weeks ago, we've not met since then. Our field goal kicker kicked a 47-yard field goal.
Forty-nine.
Oh yeah, forty-nine. Forty-nine to be paid, I think his name is Jeffrey, I don't want to mispronounce it, I don't remember his last name. Regardless, the field goal kicker for the high school did a great job in the last ballgame that gets paid, so we want to recognize him.
Yeah, definitely amazing and I guess a game of a lifetime for, I'm not going to say a game of a lifetime for Fairview, but it goes probably down in the record.
It was fun.
It's a pretty awesome game, so really, great opportunity. Okay, the other is the public announcements, do we have anything to announce? Okay, as y'all know, this is election season and I noticed that we have a few commissioners that are running, or a few candidates that are running for commissioners, and then we also have a couple state representatives candidates. So I would like to take this opportunity, allow you just to come up and say hello and something brief if you are here. I guess I'll start out with the people that are running for Board of Commissioners. Derek, if you want to just introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Derek Burks and I am running for the Board of Commissioners. And I hope you'll consider me, I'm happy to serve.
Thank you. And then also, Mr. Scott Tucker.
I'm Scott Tucker, I've lived here in Fairview a very short time, a couple of years now. And I decided to run for the board. I've tried to work with the city and help the city do things here. And I think I would like to help with building the future of Fairview. I'd really appreciate your votes.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to our meeting. Anybody else says that I, as first commissioner? Okay, and then we'll go ahead, ladies first, we'll start with Holly McCall.
Gentlemen and ladies, I'm Holly McCall, I'm a candidate for the State House of Representatives here in District 65. I have enjoyed the time I've spent in Fairview. I'm looking forward to spending quite a bit more over the next couple of months and hopefully over the next couple of years. I grew up in Franklin and I do realize that Fairview is its own different entity from Franklin and from Spring Hill. So I would like to earn your vote November 8th and I'm looking forward to learning more from the area about you. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Sam Whitson.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm Sam Whitson, the Republican candidate for the 65th House District seat in November. And I appreciate consideration of your vote and I appreciate all you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's all the politicians in the House, I'd like to recognize you, good luck. We kind of all know what you're going through, so just thank you for coming and appreciate you putting yourself out there and getting involved. So, moving on to the next item, which would be staff comments. And we have a short amount of staff here tonight.
Football fan.
So, let's see, we'll go ahead and start with Brandy, and maybe she can tell us where our missing staff members are. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am. I think Tom and Mr. Hall didn't have anything on the agenda tonight, and so we shooed them on.
Okay.
I do have a couple of exciting things I'd like to tell you about tonight. One is, I've been working closely with Scott to develop what we're calling a Commissioner Camp. It's for all the candidates running for the commissioner seats. It's going to be run over four Thursdays in October. Just to kind of review all of the things that they need to know, hopefully so they can hit the ground running whoever gets into office. And it'll also allow us an opportunity to educate the citizens a little more too, on how we work and how things roll. So we're going to cover things from the Charter Department, how the departments kind of function, day-to-day operations, the role of the Board itself, ethics of course, open meetings, open records, just all kinds of things that will be really beneficial, we think, when they start their terms. Another item that we're excited about is we're going to be a site host for a forum for all the commissioner candidates. We have two high school seniors from FHS that are going to be moderating the forum, Trey Jones and Mattie Hill. That's going to be held on October 17th at 6:30 here. We would like to request the citizens, as well as you guys or whoever else wants to submit potential questions for that event, to me, either by email or written form, just bring them by City Hall here. And then we'll kind of sift through those with the moderators and see where we're going to go with that. So all of these items will be recorded and posted to YouTube as well, so for future reference.
Okay, great. And Mr. Collins, did you have anything to add? I know that was something originally you had discussed and wanted to do, is there anything on it?
I think that'd be great. Brandy's been a huge help in that, obviously the last couple of weeks have been busy. But I think everyone's focus is, once we get to the installation of the new members, everyone's kind of on the same page, ready to get to work. And we hope that we get that. Obviously, they're not required, they are informational, but we're going to put a lot of effort into making sure that as much as we can cover in about eight hours worth of time, that we get the opportunity to equip those candidates, as well as they can be equipped to do that, I think that helps everyone. And give them the opportunity to ask questions and get information. We will, over the course of that, for questions that aren't answered during the process, once we get everyone's questions through that, we'll follow up in some sort of formats where everyone has the same information, in case they miss an event, because it is, there's a lot to do. But we look forward to doing that, and then clearly the forum will be pretty exceptional for here, I look forward to that. And with the high school being involved, I think that's a good opportunity for everyone. But we did have some ideas early on, as we discussed, we want to get to work.
Yeah.
So we look forward to seeing those done. And thank you for your participation.
Thank you. It'd be great if we could add to the forum, maybe even our state representatives, since a lot of people maybe have their own little first and then after, I don't know how much time, but y'all discuss it and see if that's a possible option. But I think it'd be a good opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for all your hard work to get that together and keeping us informed. Anything else for us tonight?
No.
Okay. And I guess that'll be it for staff, because you have something on the agenda, Chief Smith, right? So we'll wait till then, okay. They made that really quick. Okay, the next item would be approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, old business, discuss and take action on expiring board seats. And that is me, and this is just a running agenda item until we got all the board seats filled. We did have an applicant finally for the tree commission, very excited. Mr. Scott Tucker has put his name in the hat. So if we want to go ahead and take the opportunity, since he's here, to take that in consideration.
Move to approve the appointment of Mr. Scott Tucker for the tree board.
Second.
Okay, got a first and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, new business, discuss and take action of appointing two alternates to the Planning Commission. And that is me, but really Vice Mayor, probably, do you want to add anything or give us any background on what you had?
No, ma'am, we've got several applications for people that's requesting to be alternates on here. And I've looked them over, and I'm assuming y'all have had an opportunity to look them over at the same time. And I'd like to appoint, to start with, one. And then Mr. Ron Rowe, his application's here, just very in-depth about what he's done with the city, for the city recently. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Ron Rowe as the first alternate to the Planning Commission.
Okay. We have a motion to nominate Ron Rowe as the first alternate.
Second.
I got a second on that, any discussions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome back. Okay, so for the second seat, it's open on the floor.
Anyone else?
Do we have anybody else here?
I was not looking.
I'll make a motion to-
We've got two more here.
Approve Paul Golden.
Okay.
Mr. Gold, are you here? Which one, okay.
I'm here. Bleak.
Okay.
The second.
Okay, do you, well, I guess we, okay, got a first and second.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could ask that each of these individuals, I don't know them.
Yeah.
In addition to their paper, I would appreciate if they would do, if we would allow each one of them just a moment to talk to us.
It'd be great.
If that's okay with the others.
Yeah, I agree. I really wish we would have done that at first, that's really my bad. I think that would have been appropriate, just to have everybody come up. So if the candidates that are left, we have Mr. Gold, if he would like to come up and just tell us a little bit about you.
I mean, my application, I've kind of put everything on there. I have a master's in accounting from Lipscomb University, bachelor's from Tennessee Tech in accounting. I'm an assistant controller for a real estate company, a commercial real estate and development company here in Nashville. And I've lived in Fairview for about five years, and I'm just looking to serve my community.
Okay. And Mr. Bleak.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I've lived in Fairview for about 10 years now. I'm a current member of the Industrial Board, I'm a current member of the Zoning Appeals, current member of the Codes Review Board. I'm a civil engineer by trade, no longer, I'm retired. I'm a licensed surveyor. Done engineering and primarily to build prisons all my life. But I, from a community standpoint, I volunteer for Habitat for Humanity two days a week. I volunteer at Grace Works down the road here. And I volunteer for rebuilding together Nashville, which is a Davidson County organization, so. About it.
Thank you. Okay, got Mr. Golden.
Mr. Calley.
And Mr. Calley.
Hi, I've been in Fairview since 2002, both my kids graduated from Fairview. I applied for the Planning Commission last time, at the last meeting, on the Light Industrial Committee. And I work for, as a director of marketing for Southern Recycling in Nashville, and I just want to help the community.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion on the table, and we got a first and second. Do we correct, Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Any other nominations?
If I can, Mayor, we've just got three other great individuals here that have volunteered to serve the city. And I'm just looking over some of them here, Mr. Bleak, just about every board that's here so far. We've got people from American Legion, served Industrial Development Board, and it's a tough choice to make sometimes. But I think we've got three great individuals, so. That's all I've got to say.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, I think the only fair way to do it, Mayor, instead of just nominating one at a time, is that we just put all three names into nomination, and then we can either do it orally or do it by, you know, paper, but then we just take them both. But I think all three of them should be considered.
I do too. Yeah, I wish we would have done that. So, okay, let's go ahead, if we'll just do a roll call, and then who, whatever candidates, we will proceed on. So go ahead, and if you'll just vote for your choice, and whoever, if there is a candidate that outweighs, then that will be our next Planning Commissioner.
Would you mind reading the names into the record?
Yes. It is Mr. Bleak, is that, did I tell it right?
Yeah.
Mr. Gold, well, Golden, and then, what's the, I don't know.
Calley.
Mr. Calley, and one other, who is it?
That was it.
That was it, okay.
Mr. Rowe was the fourth one.
So those are the candidates.
Mr. Calley, Golden, which was the first one that spoke, and then the second one that spoke was Mr. Bleak. Mayor?
Yes.
You had a motion on the floor, you need to either withdraw it, withdraw it or vote on it. I withdraw the motion.
Okay. Okay. We'll go ahead and I'll start with Mr. Basell.
I'd cast my vote for Mr. Bleak.
Commissioner Crutcher?
Golden.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Bleak.
Okay, and Bleak is my option. Just love the fact that we can have so many choices. So can we get a motion on the floor?
Move to accept the vote.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for-
Absolutely.
Love to have so much experience and qualifications interested. We do understand, and if somebody will make sure, I know when they filled out the applications, that we were, it was explained, but this is a alternate position, you will only receive your check if you're here and you're called to step up in the position. So if we have something that we can put together, just outline for them to sign, might be a good idea, since it's something new that we've never done.
Especially if we've got a Planning Commission member that knows they're not going to be here, we can notify them ahead of time to be here.
Right. And we are not telling them that they have to be here every meeting in any means. So it'll be, they're welcome to come.
They should get an agenda.
But, yeah, and we'll get them a packet and agenda to them, but we'll just basically go from that point. Okay, any, did you have anything you wanted to add, or questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, well, that settles that, thank you once again. Item A, or B, this is discuss and take action on the Storybook Trail. And this is kind of a unique project that we had a lot of groups in our community all sit around and talk about it. The ideal came about, and I realized really quick that we had so many different groups having their own discussion. I wanted everybody to kind of get together. We had excitement from the Health Department when it was mentioned to them that they really liked the health aspect for our community, and they wanted to partner. The Park Board has been working hard, we had the Friends of the Library, Friends of the Bowie Nature Park. I'll jump on board with this idea. I know at one of the Park Board meetings that we've actually had a lot of discussion, probably more than one, but there was a lot of discussion about the potential. So we had a great meeting last week with the county, Health Department, library, had a representative of the Friends, park staff was included, and, you know, we had a great group, Friends of the Library, or Friends of the Bowie Nature Park, were all there. So it was kind of just an opportunity to get everybody in the same room, have the same vision, that we were all helping work together. Kathy Montgomery with the County Health Department had a wonderful intern this summer that helped, from Vanderbilt, helped put some information together, and they were willing to help us seek grants. So I definitely wanted to plug them in and try to utilize their service and just have them be a part of it. So we had a great meeting, we kind of talked about some of the logistics of what would work. We're at the point where we would like to start applying for grants. And so we, but before we got any farther, needed the Board's blessings to do that. And then we also need to have a survey done, because when we apply for their grants, we need a final cost. So I believe there's been some money donated for the survey, so I just need the Board's blessing. And A, the Storybook Trail, there's enough interest, we can proceed with the survey. I mean, of course, we'd have to come back for any other grant approvals, but this would just give us those legs to keep the project moving. I know that Brian Basell said that winter would be the best, especially for clearing and the trees. And there's a lot of opportunities there, so that's kind of where we are. And if I didn't, if y'all don't recall it from earlier, where it was discussed at the Board, this is a Storybook Trail that would connect the Williamson County Library to Bowie Nature Park. And it is set up where the kids can read along the way, it encourages, you know, family activity, literacy. So it just really, and just bringing more people to the park. They're looking at where they would actually change the story, it wouldn't be the same story, read it and done. They're looking for the technology of where each month you can, you know, go and have a different story to get the kids to come back and family. So anyway, it's a great little project, a lot of excitement. There has been talks, depending on what kind of grant, that we could look into some different options and funding to come up with the match. With so many different people involved, I think that we have some options of where our match would come. So I just want to open it up for discussion, allow you to ask questions. And Mr. Rowe knows a lot about the Storybook, if, I'm sure if I can't answer, maybe we can-
You can step to the podium, right?
Say.
You know, one of the things that I've looked, if I'm a mayor, one of the things that I've looked at is Jeff from the County Library Association Democrats, is name right, Jeff, what's Jeff's last name? With the County Library.
Oh, it was Jerry Bull.
Jerry, I'm not sure.
He's the chairman of the-
I know one of the things that they were talking about was for each one of the libraries, and this has been a while back, to be able to do something unique about their specific library. And we were so blessed to have that park sitting back there to make this happen. And I know it was a big thing for them at one time about it, this has been going on for quite some time. And I know at one time, Ron, didn't we turn that over to the Park Commission to study?
Right, you know, the Park Commission is tasked by the City Council here to make recommendations on the park system. And we developed that parks development chart, and we put a little box up there. And as things get finished or approved or updated, that little box is updated. So we were in the process of adding the Storybook Trail to that parks development chart. Back in March, March 1st of 2016, Jerry Bull, who is the chairman of the Williamson County Library Trustees, was at the Friends of the Library meeting, and I was in attendance on that. And they were discussing about the uniqueness of the Fairview Library, that we have the park and how they would, well, I've got it written down here, if I can read it. It said Jerry's very interested in some kind of connection between Bowie Nature Park and the library. So that's how, that's basically how this started to lift off the ground. And then the Friends of the Library president brought up about how, at one point, the Toyota Family Trust was going to do a grant, and a lady from the high school, and I believe the Friends of the Park got together. It was, it was kind of last minute and it didn't come together at that time. So as this progressed on, and Jerry's talking about increasing a relationship between the library and the city and the park. And I was, at that time, I was Park Commission Chairman, so I brought it up and I said, well, I'll add this. We didn't call it Storybook Trail then, but I'll add it to the Park Commission agenda to discuss it. So in the next meeting, which was in April, we had a discussion about it, and I kind of brought up the Storybook Trail. But there's about 10 steps to this, the way I looked at it from a Park Commission standpoint. As we were tasked to do studies on this, so all the information, the costs, the procedures, at that point, the Park Commission would then come to you folks and say, here's the project, questions, how do you want us to proceed? So that's just kind of a history of it that's unfolding, and we were probably in step number two at that time. And I know I went to the Friends of the Library, their last meeting, and did some discussion on that, and then they committed $500 towards the project. So it's exciting. It's just, don't get ahead of ourselves, I would let the process take over too.
The memo that the mayor sent out to us, one of the things that was questioned in there, it's going to be hard for us to move forward, I think, what I'm reading, until we get a survey done.
Yes.
With the grades, and that's going to be needed, going to have to look at ADA quite closely because of width and everything, especially if we're going after a grant. Am I correct in that?
Right, and I met with Brian Basell, the superintendent of the parks, and we discussed that there would have to be a survey done to check for the grades that are available, because ADA dictates what kind of a grade. There's discussion on whether you can use crush and run, or whether it has to be paved. And the, I forgot the lady's name that is in charge of that ADA for this area at least, was excited about the project and was willing to give us any kind of guidance that we needed, so.
Okay, thank you. Just to kind of let you know, I mean, we did have Williamson County Library Director Dolores Greenwald that was there. Also, Brianna- that was there, also Brianna Robb with the Health Department, Kathy Montgomery with the Health Department. We had Patsy Watkins with the UT Extension, Richard Edmondson from the Park Board, Anna, Representative of the Friends of the Park. And then our City Manager, Scott Collins, was there, myself, Keith Paisley, and Brian Basell. So we did have, all have the discussion and agreed that this would be the first step, was to get the survey done. And Brian was going to come up with a cost of the survey. So what I would like to do, I know there's at least $800 already donated to the city. I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we proceed allowing the park to, or the city to get the survey and at least we could move forward.
Second.
Okay, first and second, any discussion? Yes.
In y'all's discussion, Mayor, is it envisioned that this would be, I'm going to use the term straight line, though I realize the trail will not be straight. But it's going to be like a straight line connector trail from the library to the nature center? Or did you envision it's just going to go out into those woods and make a loop trail and go back to the library? What was the discussion?
Originally, it was a loop line, but I think the discussion had led that it would, it would cause them, the park staff, issues with trying to get over there to cut, to mow, to maintain. So it came that it would just go directly to the park. And there would have to be some kind of block off, you know, just like shutting the gate to the park that we have, there would have to be a gate to shut, you know, from the library also.
It's roughly 2,200 feet. Am I close to that?
Yeah, I think that's what they said.
It's roughly 2,200 feet, close to a half a mile.
But, and here's where I'm going with that. That's 2,200 feet, one what? And having had some experience looking for people back up in that, that's a very rough area. When your survey comes, there's going to have to be a lot of modification. There's, in fact, there's a pretty good ravine that runs back up through there. Not to mention having to go around the tip of Francis property and stuff. The survey guy can tell all y'all, can tell us all about that. My concern is if it's a one-way.
Yeah.
And the issues that you already mentioned notwithstanding, if it's a one-way, they got to get back to their cars at the library.
Yeah.
Which in essence means it's a mile trail instead of a half-mile trail. And depending upon our target audience, small children or that age children, I envision that we're, by calling the Storybook Trail, getting a child to walk this way might be okay. But when you turn around and just have them have to just walk back with no real interest in what's going on, I have some concerns about that. But I don't have any problem with us doing the survey. I mean, that's the first starting point.
Yeah.
And, and I think we need to make sure that the system we've set up, where we use the Park Commission, even though a number of the members of the Park Commission are on here, that we make sure that we keep everybody in the loop so that we don't have to, you know, we worked hard to try to get everybody into a roll and segregated and get everything set up. And I'd hate to see us do something to mess it up. But I don't have any problem with surveying. Those are just things that came to mind.
Well, we actually used the example, the picture that was there is what the Park Commission, you know, somebody had drawn up. It was a half circle with a shoot-off straight to the park. Like it would be more like a Y for there would be that back trail. I did not bring it because we're just at the point of a survey right now. And the park staff would be instrumental in deciding on how that would work. So, but yeah, those are all valid points.
You're on the board, right, for the board? It'd be great for them to come up and, to keep us in a loop of what stays there on, because that's something that we task them to do.
Yeah.
If they keep us in line with that right there, that we need this, just so we can get it done. Because I know sometimes we start some of these things, they never get completed.
Well, and that's why.
And I don't want to see that happen. I want to see it go through.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I did what I did. We had too many groups working on the same project and we had to all come together. And that's why I included a Park Board member and went that way. And I've talked to Brandon, who's now butler, that's now over the Park Board. So they've, I've tried to keep everybody included and just trying to bring us all together. Not, let's not work harder, let's work smarter.
Absolutely. And I think Brandon was going to talk to Mr. Chaplain, who does most of our survey enforces. Is that right, Larry?
He does.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, just to get a price, just to look on getting a price for it, so.
So I guess what, if we, you know, make the motion to proceed, we can give a cap. I can revise if you want to say up to a certain amount.
No, I'm not, the, I think will be fair. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, stepping on each other and that, that some of these issues got considered. Because when I heard 2,200 feet, that'd be great if it was 1,100 out and 1,100 back.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't, one way, then you've got them at the nature center with no way to get back to the library.
All right, there's a lot of possibilities. You could have a mini-trail, you could have a full trail. And they could go up and come back halfway up there. You know, it doesn't have to be.
But the survey might dictate what we can and can't do anyway.
Yeah, yes.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a few questions. I just, I was reading this earlier, so you may have said this, and if you did, I apologize. I'm not completely clear on what we're doing or what they're proposing to do. It's saying that the distance from the library to the park is approximately 2,200 feet. Does that mean the distance from the library to the park property or the distance from the library to the perimeter trail? I mean, whose property is?
We would be using the, it's all our park property. But it would start, our property backs up to the perimeter of the park. And the number actually came from Keith and Brian. So I can't answer a lot of questions besides that that's what they told us it would be.
But it sounds like based off what you're saying, our property actually backs up to the library's property. It's not 2,200 feet to the park.
Yeah, there's no other, it's park property directly behind it.
That's what I thought. That was one question I had.
This is what it looks like.
And then, and then the other, when it's talking about the survey down here, it's saying that the county, I guess maybe they were going to pay for the survey and they was looking for somebody that was on their payroll, but the surveyors that Brian checked on are not?
No, that's just saying what was discussed in the meeting and I just wanted to give you all base. But there was mentioned, she was, Ms. Montgomery was going to check with her surveyors to see if that's something they could pitch in and not cost us any money. So this was just the minutes to bring y'all in for the discussion. Mr. Collins, you look like, did you have something to add about the meeting?
No, just a point to clarify some, all of those questions. There were a couple of discussions in that, in part of the 2,200 feet. There was a, a trail that was discussed that was, that was really a semicircle, half-circle that was loop to loop from the library to the library. And then contingent upon the terrain, the connector trail that would go from a point on that trail over to the nature center. And depending on how well that can be constructed, that would either be a part of it with some signage so that if you had any cap, anything that was ADA accessible, really the loop, library to library, for sure would be ADA accessible. And then anything that connected from there to the nature center would be dependent upon, on the terrain. And it would either be a maintenance trail so you could get to and from that, that trail from the park. Or it could be used, not accessible ADA, but still be used for other purposes within the park. So there was a.
We have an old trail that's no longer maintained, that runs from the main entrance back into that woods. The deer use it a lot. But, and then we have one that is no longer maintained, that's used off of the access to Shelter 2. There, it kind of goes to the right. You can see it. It looks more like a ditch than an old trail. But it would be, those two converge up in there. But then between that point that they converge and the library, which of course fronts on Highway 100, there is a, that's going to be the problem area where the, where the loop would be. Getting to the loop, I think is, as Mr. Collins has described, is a fairly easy process. We could, that, that could be cleared out in pretty short order. But there is a pretty significant ravine. The way you would want to build it, just walking it, if you walk it, you walk it by going through Francis property because that's where the flat part of it is. And so the survey is the best place to start so they can tell us what, what we have access to and what we don't have access to.
And just for the record, Keith was going to contact the, oh, the, I've lost the name. The.
Maybe a lady.
No, not the ADA lady, but.
The environmental people, the trust people.
The trust, thank you, yes. I totally lost it. Okay, yes, so that'll be, that'll be one of the first steps too. So if we see that there was some kind of issue with the land trust, then we obviously would have to take a step back. But that'll be done before any survey, you know, took place, so. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item C, Discuss and Take Action. Permission to bid a surveillance camera and monitor and recording software and building access card system. Chief Smith.
Good evening.
The equipment downstairs or throughout the building, I guess, is the original equipment that was put in when this was built, I believe in 2003? Is that the right date? So most of us all know that in today's software age, things are obsolete in two years. And this is 13 years old. It needs to be changed out. And especially when you, when you try and share that information with somebody else, it's antiquated. They can't use it on their equipment. SISI has to pretty much stay there and babysit the process while we're trying to burn discs and DVDs and it's very not user-friendly. And it's old and the card system is old. It's, and I'm sure there are cards out there that we don't have accounted for over 13 years, so. The last, we had an estimate, it's an old one, but it was around $17,000. That's without replacing the cameras, that's software licensing, the software and some of the hard, not hard drives, so the computer.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a first and second? Any discussion? I'll, oh wait, you do? Yes, Commissioner.
Chief Smith, if you had a chance to talk with Mr. Darnery about how we would pay for it?
No, I have not. I was going to wait till I got all my information ready and approached him then. Because I don't know what it's going to be. It might be 17, could be more, I don't know, so could be less. Thank you, Mayor.
And, you know, Chief even asked, you know, before, you know, and this will be something that Mr. Collins, and maybe we can have the discussion. Typically, to get the bid, our city's practice is come in front of us and we give the blessings. But it necessarily doesn't have to be that way. So that might be a discussion we, you know, however, Mr. Collins, you know, would want to do it. I'm sure different cities do it different ways. And I don't know if it's necessary to get the bids, but as a courtesy, before he started putting the bids out there, he wanted to be on the agenda for that. So, do you have any input?
I would have no issue with, at least notify.
And the commission that you're going to, that you're going to put something out for bid, particularly if you're going to spend your money or match.
Right.
Once we got that information, we'll be able to come back and kind of give you the source of funds, depending on how much it is and opportunity to pay for it. But as, as always is, something goes out for bid and you start getting calls.
Yeah.
And we'll have you at least know that there's an anticipation for that, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, City Manager. Items for discussion. Ms. Lanes, update?
I just really have one thing for you tonight. I've been here four weeks now and it's been a pretty whirlwind four weeks and I've gotten a plan together. We were able to get some information from some of our community meetings, staff meetings, all the other that went through. I'll be preparing that, getting that information back to you. And I just want to thank you in advance because this is going to be a busy couple of months. You'll probably get tired of emails, meeting requests, and all these other things that we have, but I think they're important. We have some opportunities with some, with some resolutions we've been able to get to at the police department, some other departments that now I think we can move forward with the, with the rebuilding and rebranding of Fairview, which we all know should be a pretty simple process given the opportunity that we have. So just thank you in advance for the effort that's about to be put into it and I look forward to all the help I can get. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Basell. Oh, no, Attorney, I totally left you out. I'm so sorry.
I don't have anything other than just to wish everybody is safe and joyous Labor Day.
Thank you, yes. Okay, Commissioner Basell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing to kind of throw out here, logistic, and it's more directed to us than it is to anybody else. Mr. Collins was nice enough to invite us all to his staff meetings. And in, and I don't believe those staff meetings are open to the public. They're his private staff meetings. And I have, I guess I have a concern that if more than one of us shows up at those meetings without some coordination between us, that we've created a problem for ourselves. So I guess I would, I would want us to, maybe if we were going to attend his staff meetings, that we let him know so that he could let us know that somebody else had either already signed up or whatever so that we don't create a problem for ourselves. Does anybody else see that as an issue or?
Larry's got his hand on the button over there.
I can appreciate the appearance. The Open Meetings Act says that any time that you meet to conduct business, talking about the Board, can meet, meet to conduct business, or if you're deliberating, debating toward a decision, then it's subject to open records. If you're just going up there to listen to his, to Mr. Collins' staff meeting and you're not going, I mean, you can say something if you want, but you're not going to, I assume you're not going to go in there and be debating toward any decision or course of action. It's strictly informative, is that, is I understand it?
I would think so.
And if it's strictly informative, it's just like retreats that boards have. You know, somebody might question it, yes. If you've got more than, than two people there that are members of the Board, it's always subject to being questioned. But it doesn't require you to keep minutes if you're not deliberating toward a decision. Obviously, a meeting like this, yes. But if you're going there for just information, you know, I can question the fact that, yeah, all the Board members were up there. But you could establish, I think, pretty quickly by the staff that was there, that you were there listening, you were not there, and that's not to say you can't say how you doing or something like this, but you certainly are not there to pass along information to the staff as to what they should be doing. You're not debating for a decision, for funds, for anything. If you just want to go to the meeting, I don't see any problem with it. And we may run into a problem and we may have to, to present the facts that, yes, you were there observing. No, you were not there contributing to anybody's department. And if you are, then certainly that's, that's violation. And the safest way to do it is like Commissioner Basell said, you've got one shows up and, and then there's no question you're not there deliberating toward anything. But I can't tell you that the whole Board couldn't go in there as long as they sat down and, and listened and observed and were not participating in what would normally be a business-type meeting.
Yeah, okay, well.
To me, it's about like us going down to Dixon Water Authority. Two or three of us going down there just to observe and just to listen, that's just.
As long as it's strictly observation and it's for your information. You know, people do retreats all the time. And it'd be a similar type situation. I think I could defend that. Somebody might make me have to, but I wouldn't have a problem with it.
Well, I was going to say, I had the opportunity and I went. I couldn't stay all day and go to all of them, but I absolutely loved it. I couldn't stay all day and go to all of them, but I absolutely loved it. Thought it was a great opportunity to just to sit in there and see what was going on, and was so glad that I didn't get to do it the first Tuesday, but did get to sit in a couple and just, you know, thought it was a great opportunity to be able just to be there. And I don't think it would be a conflict, I understand your issue, but I seriously doubt all five of us will show up. But there might be that occasion, and we will get hammered if they, I think the key is to realize that it's Mr. Collins' staff meeting. And we're here to just, you know, be there with his employees, you know?
And the part of it is, we're about to get to work in the city of Fairview. All of our departments, we're all committed to make sure we're doing everything we can to grow the city and get things right. The ultimate end goal as it relates to the commission is, I know there's some interest by individual commission members for individual departments or operations of the city. My goal in that, number one, is so that we have specific FaceTime with each department and their senior staff, each and every week, so we can maintain some schedule and order of the big things that go on in the city. I think it's important to me that we keep those things on the front burner and keep those workings worked. The other thing that I hope over the course of time we're able to accomplish is, with five members of the commission, mayor and four commission members, if we can work this the way that I hope it would work, we would be able to take those committee and those weekly meeting recommendations, and whichever commission member is really tasked with that area can bring those recommendations back to the commission, rather than just being the staff making that recommendation back, back to the city. A lot of that is staff-driven, but having a commission member who engages in one area or the other, who can bring that back, I think lifts some credibility to the process, and it helps facilitate some teamwork between a commission member or members and senior staff members, because again, it's gonna be a partnership process in that. So I want you to be as engaged as you can be, certainly we're gonna work within the law. You know, I'm not going to allow some issue that brings up the question of Open Meetings Act or other thing. The purpose is to make sure we're doing things right, not to engage in some issue, and we'll work very hard to do that. But we'll take as much participation as we can get. It's, there's so much opportunity here, I think you wanna be a part of what we're trying to build, so, and we hope you take advantage of it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I left very excited, so I just encourage y'all to try to, at some point, and even if you do like I did, and, you know, know that you can't commit for the day, but, you know, one section, that would be great, yes.
If I could just make one other statement, the very first section of the Open Meetings Act says that the public's business shall be done in public. It does not imply, it does not say, it has not interpreted to say that it's trying to eliminate the legislative board from receiving information.
Yes.
It just don't want you conducting business in private. And I don't have any problem with what City Manager's proposing. I think it could be defended if somebody wants to attack that, you invite them to the meeting, let them see what goes on.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, anything else? Sorry to jump in a conversation on your time. Commissioner Crutcher.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, set?
I just wanna thank everybody for all their hard work. I wanna thank the people that put applications in to serve the city. I wish more people did, I wish we, and we will eventually be creating more opportunities for people to volunteer within the city as we grow. The city is moving along great, I'm tickled to death with just about everything I hear. And you've been earning your dollars in the last four weeks. Tell the chief to keep coming here asking for money.
I will make sure we keep a check on that money spending.
I wanna thank everybody, and I got one more note here somewhere, I shouldn't have turned it away. Oh, there it is. Derek Byer, he's one of our officers downstairs here, lost his father this week. So if we could just all keep him in our prayers, he'd be greatly appreciated. I mean, he just lost his grandfather not long ago, and he's lost his father unexpectedly. So just keep him in your prayers, he's one of our officers downstairs, we appreciate him.
Okay, thank you. And I'll wrap it up quick, 'cause I know there's a UT Falls game, and this went way longer than I thought. But anyway, I just wanted to close real quick and just, you know, once again, say thank you to all the people that are running, for all of us taking the time to step out, and good luck to you, and just encourage everybody to get to know the candidates. It's really important, especially the state representative seat we need. We work very closely, and it affects us, so I definitely wanna encourage that. Exciting things going on in the city of Fairview. I just can't say enough how ready I am for this time. And I think it's, we're gonna see a big difference, and we have a wonderful community, and I'm blessed to live in it and serve it, and so I look forward to getting some of this behind us and moving forward. It's a new day, not to live in the past, and let's just do great things. So if that's it, if I can get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
So moved. We're adjourned.